Yeah, that's right.
Where is Lisa?
She loves us.
I didn't see her come back.
She's in the bathroom or... He should call her Mary. She'll show up quick.
Welcome to tonight's study session. The first item on the agenda is a presentation from the Police Department on Police Reserve Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we were coming in front of you to talk to you about our plans to restart a Reserve Officer Program for the city of Casa Grande. And the purpose of that is to supplement and assist our sworn and non-s sworn police employees in various duties. We feel that it will provide professional sworn Reserve Officers to support both the Patrol Element and the Criminal Investigations Division. These Reserve Officers will work part-time on a volunteer basis, but yet maintain their certification under the AZ Post standards. Our selection process that we have outlined is we are currently going to only appoint Casa Grande Police Officers who are retired in good standing. We're not going to open it up to outside agencies. We're going to first run it with our own retirees. Since we have so many of them retiring in the next couple of years, we're going to evaluate the program on that. And if it is successful, then at that time, we can explore bringing in people from outside. Our reasoning behind that, obviously, is the fact that we know these people. We know their work ethic. We know the good and the bad about them, the strengths and the weaknesses, and they know our system. Their duties and responsibilities, as outlined in our policy, they're required to work 48 hours a calendar quarter, or 192 hours a year, for service for the Police Department. And they have to do quarterly hours. That way, we have access to them year-round. They would carry out duties assigned to them by our program coordinator, who at this time would be Lieutenant Sherwin. They must conform to all our uniform and appearance standards of our department. They're required to meet the training requirements applicable to a full-time sworn officer. And these training hours do not count towards their 48 hours that they have to give to the city. And they must maintain their AZ Post certification. The compensation is minimal. It's a voluntary assignment. We will provide them with some uniform items as needed. For instance, our first one that is interested in this program is currently a Sergeant. And there's not going to be a rank structure in our Reserve Program. So, obviously, he would need a shirt without rank insignia. Reserves will use the weapons provided them at the time of retirement. The expected costs to the city are very minimal. Reserves will have to qualify annually. So, there will be a slight increase in some ammo cost, but it's not like we're going to have 100 Reserve Officers. It's going to be incremental, and it'll be minimal. And as I stated, a minimal number of uniform items that will be returned to the department anytime that they separate or leave the program. I think it's important to note that we're going to continue to evaluate this program quarterly to make sure it fulfills the needs of our department and the city and remains cost-effective for everybody. The benefit, just a couple easy benefits to the department and to our city, it's a minimal expense to keep years of experience and knowledge connected with our department and our younger officers. We'll be able to use Reserve Officers for special events, which would limit the number of current on-duty officers or officers we'd be paying overtime to. And these Reserve Officers will be able to assist in tasks that free up current members of our departments and allow them to complete other assignments. For instance, we currently have detectives and professional standards and even our PIO that are doing background investigations on new hires for us, as well as dispatch. And with the amount of people we're losing in the drop, they're very busy doing background investigations. And this would be a perfect job that could be fulfilled by a Reserve Officer to meet their hours. We have a policy already created. It's a best practice that Lieutenant Sherwin compiled that was sent to us through Edwards and, used to be Edwards and Ginn, but our hired attorneys. And we also had this policy vetted by Brett's office. And he made some suggestions that we tweaked. And we feel that we have a pretty solid, or a very solid, policy in place. One thing I didn't add is the removal of people from the program. It's not an automatic, just because you retire with us, we're going to take you. And removal of the program, if someone does not fulfill their quarterly hours the first time, they will be forbidden to work any extra jobs or anything using any of our retired equipment or anything like that, or under the heading of a retired police officer. And if they fail to do it the second time, they're automatically removed from the program. We want to make sure that the benefit for this is two ways. And we're trying to even that out as much. And obviously, we want the benefit to be to our department and to our city more so than individuals. And with that, we'd answer any questions, if you have any.
Matt?
Wait, when you talked about the extra jobs? You said when they work extra jobs? Is that for the city or for independent?
Basically, for themselves. But they work for these companies that contract for extra jobs for officers. And these companies don't necessarily need current police officers. They just need people that are AZ Post qualified.
And so, there's a requirement of 48 hours for the city every quarter? Is there a requirement balanced out the extra jobs, or is that just...?
That's going to be up to the individual. They're no longer, Counsel, they're no longer our employees, so it's kind of hard to dictate what they do. We just want to make sure that we get our hours from them and that they maintain their AZ Post and that they attend the mandatory training that we require of them.
Lisa, or Lisa, Donna, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Lisa and going...
Lisa wasn't married. So, a couple questions, Chief, on the training hours that they have to do. If there's costs involved in specific training, are we going to be responsible for that? Or is it more in-house training?
It's all in-house training that they'll have to do. The only cost that I can foresee, and Scott, jump in if I'm wrong, if you see it's wrong, is for the ammunition, for the qualifications. But we will not be doing specialized training for the Reserve Officers. They will train alongside our officers when we have regularly scheduled mandated in-service training.
And then, the second question I had, when you talked about removal from the program, is there going to be any kind of evaluation process at the end of each year, like a written evaluation?
Yes. And we talked about that. We're not going to, we're not going to, it's basically a pass/fail where the coordinator will write a memo to me stating that this officer has met all the requirements that we set out, that their AZ Post training has been done, and how many events that they worked for the city in that year. And it will be basically a pass/fail at that time.
How many personnel that are added, does this help set aside the shortages that you've had in the Police Department from time to time?
No, and thank you, Counsel Powell, for bringing that up, because that is one important thing I wanted to bring up. This is not going to be used to keep us from coming to the City Council and the city for more people. They will not be answering calls in the street. They won't be in a car by themselves answering calls for service. Their job will be in-house, assisting and relieving some of our people from some of the tasks that they're given right now to keep them away from what I would consider their primary function.
Matt?
Sorry, one more. I thought it was neat you said about, because when you came to us a couple of years ago and you saw the shortage coming, and I appreciate that, and this is a good way to help that. I know it's not going to solve the problem. But also, will they be riding along with, like, maybe some of the newer officers from time to time? Is that part of the program? I mean, if it's needed or to kind of help, just to share that knowledge, maybe, or interact with it?
I'm sorry. I think Counsel Herman, they'll be exposed to some of the younger officers, but we don't plan on using them for anything like a field training program or anything like that. We're developing, and Sergeant Tenno, who will be here tonight, is one of the ones that was very important in this. We're developing our younger officers as field training, or our officers as field-trained officers as the first step towards their ability to be supervisors in the upcoming years. So, we don't have any plans of using them, the Reserve Officers on the street at all, unless it would be for, like, a city event, like a parade, Fourth of July or something, where we currently might use our volunteers or use a current member of our Police Department.
Well, we'll have a bigger base to draw from for those.
Yes.
Okay. And again, when you brought that to our attention, it was pretty eye-opening. So, I'm glad that this is another program that we're starting to benefit us.
I just wanted to make a comment, and thank you for coming up with this. Just an observation on Reserve Programs. The general public doesn't recognize a new officer, an old officer, an experienced one, a part-time one. They see a uniformed officer and they assume they're fully trained, fully equipped. And that's always one of the challenges with the Reserve Program. But I appreciate you guys squaring that up right off the bat and only taking retiring officers that you know what their capabilities are. So, I love it. It sounds great.
Lisa?
And I was going to piggyback on that. Of course, you know, it's so nice to take advantage of the, you know, skilled, you know, community members here. And we have people that have had this background. And so, I mean, it's great. And Lieutenant Sherwin, I'm happy to hear that you're going to coordinate. I would imagine that's going to be tough. I mean, you have a strong volunteer program already as it is, but I can see how this would be to your advantage because they're actual officers that have had years of experience. But I wanted to see if you have feelers out there to see how many people you think you'll get right off the bat. Have you been talking to some people? And any idea what you're going to start with?
They've actually been talking to me. There's a strong interest in this. I do know the first, four out of the first five that are scheduled to retire, I know will be in this program. And the only reason the other one isn't is that she's moving out of state. So, there is a very strong interest in this program.
Great. No, I think it's great, too.
Donna?
I just want to make a... I'm really happy to see that you're limiting to just Casa Grande officers only. And I sit, and I think I mentioned, I sit on the committee at Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and this is one of the topics that have come up. And there was a number of officers from other communities that sits on this that are now on council. And they felt that it would help with shortages. And I did not want that to happen. And that's why, at the committee meeting, I voted no, because I think that we need to be very respectful of the fact that the officers need to make sure that, you know, we have jobs when we need jobs and there's a place for people that are retired. So, I'm really happy about the fact that you're being very selective on this and you're not taking outside from other communities, because we need people that know Casa Grande and will do that. So, I'm really excited about it.
Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, Larry, do you want to introduce the next one?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll actually start the presentation. And obviously, we've asked our partners, Arizona Water Company representatives, to assist with this particular dialogue this evening. I do want council to know that there is a corresponding item that you'll be considering during the regular council meeting, item K2. But because of the length of the presentation and some of the complexities, I felt it was important for us to hold this particular discussion in a study session format. And since Chief McCrory was so expeditious in his presentation, they're even yielding an additional 15 minutes to us, right? Thank you, Chief, for that, by the way. But I am happy to introduce our partners from Arizona Water Company. We have Fred Schneider and Terry Su Rossi, who will be presenting with me this evening on the Copper Mountain Ranch project. And I know the council is aware of the fact that staff has been working very closely with Arizona Water on a water resources plan. And it has really yielded a number of positive benefits to this point. And the council has heard in the past, the demand management system that's been implemented. We're working on other water supply policies that Mayor and Council will be considering as well, such as our effluent allocation policy that will be coming before the council. But as Casa Grande continues to grow, we actually, as a byproduct of this water resources planning effort, had a discussion with Arizona Water about the potential of, about potential options that would open the Copper Mountain Ranch development for potential development opportunities. And so, we've really been working on this. The mayor's been actively involved with this as well. He's had several discussions with the Director of Water Resources along the way. And really, tonight is what I would consider to be just an overview of the path that we're traveling. The council action that you'll take later on during the regular council meeting is really the policy decision. Staff asking the Mayor and Council to support the direction that we're traveling in this partnership. But I do need to, number one, express a sincere amount of thanks to both Fred and Terry Su for their technical expertise and really just what I consider to be brainstorming and as we've evaluated the potential options of this solution for Copper Mountain Ranch. I'm going to start, really, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, by giving a little bit of an overview of what we're going to be talking about tonight and just summarizing a bit of the development. It's been a number of years since this council, since any council has heard much on Copper Mountain Ranch. Well, 2006, I think, would have been the last time that there was any dialogue. We do have Mr. Larry Yount, who is actually a property owner in that area as well here tonight. And so, I guess I would say that, at least in my opinion, this is a policy topic that we have to work very collaboratively with the various entities that are looking for solutions in this area. And so, as far as the agenda tonight, I've talked a little bit about the background information. I am going to be handing off the microphone to the folks from Arizona Water to talk about water resources and water infrastructure and a bit of the next steps. And then, we'll close. Obviously, we want the Mayor and Council to have the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have this evening as well. So, Copper Mountain Ranch, I think all of you are very familiar with the location of this particular development. It actually originated in the 80s and the 90s, where the Mayor and Council and the then-developer actually planned a master plan community, which is actually east of Penale Avenue in the Sacagawea Mountains. It is always been really outlined by the development community as a premier development, not only in Casa Grande, but in the state. And so, what I, as we go through these slides tonight, at least the ones that I'm presenting, I want to make sure that the council is fully aware that the solutions that we're looking at today are really focused in the area of our Copper Mountain Ranch Water Company and the designation that we have there. And we've got some slides that I think will depict that a little more thoroughly for everybody. But our ultimate plan is, as we're looking through the pathway for development in this area, that we find solutions that will benefit the entire northern boundary of our community. So, what you'll see on the map here, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is actually the original development that was brought to the Mayor and Council in the 80s and 90s. And I think many of you are aware of the fact that we did, at that point in time, concurrently with the development plan, actually create a Community Facilities District. And really, the primary intention of that Community Facilities District at the time that it was formed, as all of you know, the CFD statute actually is utilized to build enhanced communities. But there was definitely a major emphasis on water at that point in time. And so, what you see here is the portion, what I would consider in the lavender or purplish color there, you'll see the original boundaries of the development and the Community Facilities District as it was formed in 2000. In 2002, and I know that, I believe, Mr. Powell was on the council at that point in time. It's right about the time that I arrived in the organization. Mr. Huddleston was the Chief of Police. And so, there's still a little bit of knowledge of this time. But ultimately, the city acquired the Mohawk-Anderson Water Companies, two water companies that were privately run at that point in time. The city actually acquired those. There are approximately 250 customers, active customers, that we still provide water to today. And so, when the Mayor and Council are establishing rates and the like, it's really for this particular area that is highlighted in the yellow there. Again, the overall vision at that point in time was that there would be some type of a strategy and a plan that would be developed to actually utilize the designation or the water company to ultimately provide services to this northern area of our community. And so, in 2002, shortly after the acquisition, the area became a member services area. We had applied through the Arizona Department of Water Resources for a designation. That designation was granted for, and actually awarded, the city was awarded, or the CFD was awarded approximately 4,113 acre feet of, acre feet based on groundwater physical availability in the vicinity of the Mohawk-Anderson Company at that time. And this is really just, again, the designation. And so, you'll see that our designation is, and it's the crosshatched section now of the map, you ultimately see the area of the Mohawk-Anderson, as well as the Copper Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District. And so, the city still has that designation today. It's something that we've maintained. We've paid into the GRD as well along these many years, again, just providing services to those roughly 250, to those 250 active customers. Concurrent with the designation, there was a council policy to actually transfer those assets to the city at that point. And that actually happened hand-in-hand from the, a transfer from the Community Facilities District to the city of Casa Grande. And the council did that in 2003. In 2006, we, as the council can recall, the housing boom was in full swing at that point in time. And the property that was once identified as Copper Mountain Ranch had been assembled along with other property owners to the south. And so, now, you begin to see the pink, the addition of the pink area there. The Mayor and Council did agree, and the Community Facilities District Board did agree to expand those boundaries. And at that particular time, there was a new master plan that was being contemplated that really was focused on residential housing and a resort lifestyle in that area there. I just want to point out through this map, again, that the area that is in pink is currently not, is not covered in the designation. The city did make application to expand the designation of the assured water supply into the pink area, but that particular application is still pending, obviously, in ADWR, based on some of the water modeling issues that we've faced in the Penale AMA. Most recently, with the, well, and I guess I would say this as well, so roughly 2008, we saw the downturn in the economy and the situations that the nation, and certainly Arizona and Casa Grande, faced with the housing market. And that essentially put, really slowed down any of the planning of this particular area and within the city entirely, in fact. And so, with the recent activities that have transpired in the housing market in general in Arizona and Penale County and within our community, we have had some interest by the new owners of this. Since 2006, there's these various parcels have really been parceled off into four owners. And the RISE Development Group, as you can see, we've got the box there, approached the city and had talked about the potential of a partnership with the city and Arizona Water and their organization, their development organization, to try to come up with some type of options to essentially utilize the city's designation, potentially partnering with Arizona Water to provide the physical water. And they actually, the RISE group, building some level of infrastructure in this particular area, developing water infrastructure in this particular area to really begin to spawn that. There are a number of elements that have to be met in order for something like that to transpire. And we're going to talk a little more about that here in the few, here in the next few minutes. But ultimately, as I said early on, at least in my mind, and I think the partners that we've got around the table will agree, that this is going to have to be a collective effort with the other property owners in this area. We need to develop a vision that ultimately gets executed very concisely with the help of everybody who stands to gain in this particular development. And so, and as I mentioned earlier, roughly in December 2020, our discussion with Arizona Water really commenced. And we really felt like there were some opportunities for us to at least vet with the Arizona Department of Water Resources. Some of that has been transpiring. The hope was that we ultimately would be able to have what I would consider to be a very solid solution by this time, but with just everything and the activity that are going on and the various challenges that we're faced with the Penale AMA and the modeling, ultimately, we find ourselves in a position where we're asking council to consider this memorandum of cooperation tonight with Arizona Water in advance of really having what I consider to be clear direction from the state, Arizona Department of Water Resources. But we have been very engaged with that group. They've been very cooperative in meeting with us. And so, I'm feeling very positive, and I believe that there will be some opportunities to move this thing forward here in the near term. This is just a timeline, essentially what I just articulated in narrative format. So, I'm not going to really go much more into this. I'm going to let both Fred and Terry Su talk a little more about it. It does talk about what I would consider to be our phased approach to this, to this solution. Again, we see that there will be incremental steps that will actually transpire as we provide services or find a solution for the entire northern part of our community. But ultimately, we see that it's something that can potentially be done here in the very near term. The group did, and I did express this in my request for council action item this evening, the group did establish a set of objectives that I think are very important for the Mayor and Council to consider tonight. I'm not going to read these in order, but ultimately, what you'll find is that, just in summary, before I hand off the advance here, that we see this as a potential option for us to continuing the development in Casa Grande, to develop a development that we think will be a premier development within our community, certainly one that, as we continue to attract new jobs and the manufacturing industry into the community, we're going to need places for people to live. And I don't think it's, I know many of you have articulated the fact that, at least in your opinion, you would like to see not only the employees living in Casa Grande, but all the way to the executives. And we hope that if, with a quality development, that we can begin to see that transition begin to take place with the diversity of housing stock and at least just some of what I would consider to be the initial visions that have been articulated along the way with this development, at least in my opinion, and I think staff's opinion, everyone would agree, that this could really open the door to bringing what we consider to be... agree that this could really open the door to bringing what we consider to be a diversity of housing stock as well as potential of other commercial and resort, potential resort types of solutions to our fine community. But we want to do that, obviously, in an affordable manner. I don't think, I'll just say this, that I don't think that there's any one of the groups that becomes a partner in this when it's all said and done that could do it on their own. I don't feel that the city could do it on our own. It's something that we're going to need assistance with on the technical side and with the, potentially, you know, with Arizona Water from a physical water, potentially from a physical water perspective, as well as with the development community that is going to be developing in that area. And so with that, I believe I'm handing the advancer to Teri Sue, who's going to talk a little bit about the water resources component of that.
My name is Teri Sue Rossi, and I'm the Water Resources Manager for Arizona Water Company. And it's my pleasure to be before you tonight to talk about a premier development for your community. Our job is to help the communities that we serve create their dreams. All we really do is just add water to the situation. And this is indeed a very exciting development. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about how we're expecting to provide a sustainable water supply to the area. And I'm going to begin with a guiding principle that we developed. So the city and the county, actually, and Arizona Water Company jointly went to a Growing Water Smart Workshop in February of 2020. And while we were there, we developed this guiding principle that we use in really all of the work that we're doing relative to the water resource plan. In fact, we showed you this same guiding principle when we came and talked about the demand management program. And I'm just going to read it because I want to get in the habit of doing that every time we meet to talk about these issues. That's how important this is to us. So our community farms and businesses need water to thrive, and we risk becoming too dependent on groundwater. But we maintained our agricultural economy on Colorado River water, meaning CAP water, and we grew our communities on groundwater, both of which are expected to decline. Therefore, in order to protect our quality of life, help meet future water needs, and grow our economy, we need to do these three things: reduce our reliance on groundwater, invest in sustainable water supplies, and use the water we have more efficiently. So part of this, part of the importance of this guiding principle was really tied to the general land use plan that you all just ended up adopting. And so within the general land use plan, as you know, there are these specific water resource goals, and we were very involved with the city in helping to develop these. And so the four goals are implementing the water conservation measures to reduce the outdoor water use, and we came to you with the demand management program. I believe last November, we talked about it. And then we've implemented it in April. It's going wonderfully. And then another goal was to reduce the total water use, the per capita water use in the city of Casa Grande by 15% from 2020 levels. And the total, again, I'll show you that in a minute, actually. And then another goal is the maximum, to maximize the use of effluent as an alternative to groundwater where that's appropriate. And then the fourth goal is to develop additional water supplies to reduce the dependency on groundwater. And Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think really Copper Mountain Ranch is really the first subdivision that would be coming, or community that would be coming up through the current general land use plan. And so they've been working very hard to try to comply with all of the goals that you see in the general land use plan. So just a little background, so this is out of the general land use plan. So this is our, the projected growth in terms of population and water demand. So today, the demand is about 15,000, 16,000 acre feet and about 70,000 people. And by 2050, according to the general land use plan, our demand will be about 30,000 acre feet, and we'd be serving about 140,000 people. In terms of per capita water use, because you might recall that the standard is to reduce our per capita water use by 15%, so today, the per capita water use, the total per capita water use is 198. The residential per capita water use is 96 if you include HOAs and 85, I believe, or is it 88? I can't remember if I was reading that. If you don't include the HOAs, my vision is just not quite good enough for that. And so, whoops, seems like I'm missing something. No, that's, I guess, the next slide. So now let's talk a little bit about the specific water resource plan for Copper Mountain Ranch that's consistent with the general land use plan. So there's three elements, and these line up with those three objectives we talked about earlier that are in the guiding principles. So we've got a demand management program, 100% reuse of reclaimed water, and securing additional water supplies. From an assured water supply perspective, and Larry was briefly mentioning this, is that we're going to rely on the designation of assured water supply based on the physical availability that is out at the Anderson-Mohawk groundwater ranch. And we have done some hydrologic modeling out there, and the water supplies look really good out there. So that was, I think, a great purchase in the part of the city a number of years ago, and that will serve this development well. In terms of the demand management program, conservation is the foundation of Copper Mountain Ranch. They are in the process of revising their plan, as we speak, their master plan, to be completely consistent with the general land use plan. So they've actually pulled out a lot of the high water use elements, including, I think, the golf course is no longer a part of that, if that's correct, Larry. So they've eliminated a golf course from that. So they've worked pretty hard to make sure that it's in compliance with the general land use plan. The reduction, if we did a 15% reduction in the current gallons per capita per day rate, it would be 168. And Copper Mountain Ranch right now, as it's designed, in the current, in the newer form, it would be less than 140 gallons per capita per day. So that's even more than what we would expect. It's about a 30% reduction from the current levels. So they're working really hard to be as efficient as possible. The demand management program, as you know, is the one that we just recently implemented. And so the Copper Mountain Ranch system would become a part of that existing program. And so that includes, obviously, the general land use plan elements, and includes the existing ordinances the city has already in place for low water use landscaping and other water wasting ordinances and that kind of thing. We also have a customer high water use inquiry resolution and notification process. We have conservation-oriented rate structures. We have leak detection and repair. We have meter replacement program. And we also have the Save at Casa Grande program. And that's the program that we launched in April. And I just want to make a plug for that. And so if you have not liked our page, if you have not checked us out on Facebook or on Instagram, please do. We'd love for you to follow the Save at Casa Grande program. And then we also have the Waterwise Outside Program, which we are in the process of implementing now, and we're working with your Parks and Rec staff to focus on several of the different parks. And I think one of the areas is actually City Hall as well, to figure out how to use water more efficiently on those high water use areas. As far as the water supply plan is concerned, and Larry alluded to this as well, is that there are kind of two different plans moving in concert. One is to, is for Arizona Water Company to begin by providing water to Copper Mountain Ranch. And my boss, Fred, will be standing up in a minute and kind of describing how the infrastructure works, which will make it more obvious as to why we're doing this. And so we would be providing a combination of groundwater and recovered CAP water and potentially recovered reclaimed water. And then in the, and then at some point, when the Anderson-Mohawk groundwater ranch is connected from an infrastructure perspective to either to our system or to Copper Mountain Ranch itself, then the city of Casa Grande would be providing the water directly with that groundwater ranch water and with reclaimed water produced at Copper Mountain Ranch and other renewable water supplies. And so the city will be the water provider even when Arizona Water Company is providing water. So Arizona Water Company will provide water to the city, and then the city will serve the water to the Copper Mountain Ranch area. And this will be done within the context, the initial water supply that Arizona Water Company will provide, will be done through a water supply agreement. And you'll be seeing more of this as time goes on. And these are some elements of it. So the parties will be the city and Arizona Water Company. The sources of water will be water from Arizona Water Company's water system. Types of water, again, are groundwater, recovered CAP water, and recovered reclaimed water. There'll be points of delivery that will be agreed to on the eastern end of the property near Penale Avenue. And then, and then everything will be master metered. So at each point of delivery, we'll know exactly how much water we're delivering to the city's water system. And then the effective date of the agreement will be starting when water service has been established until the groundwater ranch has provided the backup or the final supply. And even after the Anderson-Mohawk groundwater is brought to bear, Arizona Water Company will continue to serve as a backup and redundant supply going on into the future. Some other basic terms of the agreement includes that the rates will be established based on a cost of service study. We'll obviously meter all water quality standards. We're going to be relying on the designation of assured water supply, so the city will need to maintain that in good standing. And the parties will cooperate on all permits that we would need to acquire and in any annual reporting. And I think that's it for the water resource piece. And I'm going to turn it over to Fred to talk about the infrastructure.
I'm Fred Schneider. I'm president of Arizona Water Company. I want to say thank you very much for having me here this evening, and I appreciate everybody providing us the opportunity to present our thoughts on Copper Mountain Ranch, and I really appreciate the partnership and the relationship that we have with the city of Casa Grande. I know I've said it before, but I firmly believe it, that we are much stronger and much smarter when we work together. And I believe that you'll see this evening in the presentation that that is just what we've done here. So kind of a pickup where kind of Larry was in looking for a path forward. So with the city's designation and our water system being adjacent to the actual project for Copper Mountain Ranch, it provides us really a great opportunity to leverage the city's designation, which allow the development to move forward with an assured water supply. And then you also use and leverage our water system that we have, which is, as you can see on the map, the blue lines, were actually adjacent to and contiguous to the Copper Mountain Ranch development. And most importantly, we are probably right next door in the close proximity of the first phase of Copper Mountain Ranch that RISE Development wants to do, which is also the farthest point away from the Anderson-Mohawk water system. So it really creates a great opportunity and a great partnership here. So it kind of explains how the process, as we envision, will go forward. So the city of Casa Grande will be able to approve the Platts and the project under its designation. That's the allowance for the assured water supply for the Platts to get recorded. Arizona Water Company and RISE are working on infrastructure as we speak, so that we can provide water service from our system to the Copper Mountain Ranch and the city's water system to get the project up and going for a period of time to get the value of Copper Mountain Ranch large enough to where it can help fund some of that infrastructure that's needed to get water from the Anderson-Mohawk system over to the Copper Mountain Ranch part of the system. Once that is done, and there's a financial ability, then we'll work with the city of Casa Grande to drill additional wells, build the infrastructure and the pipelines to wheel water, to convey water from Anderson-Mohawk, probably somewhere along down Cortson, to the Desert Carmel area. That is the far west end of our water system. Thereby, we can wheel it through our system and deliver it to Copper Mountain Ranch, just as we had planned in the interim. And then that infrastructure will continue to develop until the project kind of reaches a buildout and we're conveying all the water that's needed. So some of the key infrastructure we plan to use to serve Copper Mountain Ranch, we have what we call here the Scott Drive Storage Tank and Booster Station. It's off of Scott Drive, just north of Val Vista, just south of Hopi. It's about 5 million gallons of storage there. We have the ability to expand that. We have ability to move about 20 million gallons of water a day through our system. So we have quite a bit of capacity and ability to move water. Some additional assets that we have available to us, we've installed about 12,000 linear feet of 24-inch water main down McCartney, and that's from Tucker to Weaver Roads, and that's the water line that went under I-10, so we're able to move water from the east side of I-10 to the west side of I-10, which also helps move water over to Copper Mountain Ranch. With that, we bought a five-acre parcel of property off of Overfield, about two and a half miles north of Florence Boulevard. And that's the main purpose is to take that water, that part of the water system, convey that water west towards the main part of Casa Grande. More specifically here, we bought a 15-acre parcel for two wells, which is on the, what, northwest corner of Early and I-10, right across from Mission Royale on the west side of I-10. And that plan is for a regional storage tank, pump station, and a well field that will move water from that area into Casa Grande. And we're currently working with RISE Development to drill two additional wells just north of that site, specifically because we bought that piece of property off of Evans. And those two wells, one's been drilled, we're doing some evaluation of it, and the second well is under construction. I'll give you a little map of where those are at. So the piece of property on the corner of Early and I-10 with the two, the blue triangles, which says AWC Wells, that is our two planned wells on that site, and that'll be a regional storage tank booster station facility. And then the two red triangles, which says RISE Development, that's the two wells they've acquired the property for and are currently drilling and developing those wells. And that is intended to be the water supply to get Copper Mountain Ranch started. Some ideas that we have of conveying water from Anderson-Mohawk, the city's system, into our system, and then north into Copper Mountain Ranch. And there's a, I wouldn't say all these are needed, these are just some ideas we have of moving water. We kind of have the southern pipeline route, which is probably our preferred route. The southern area of the Anderson-Mohawk system has the best water quantity and is probably the best ability to move water. It's also the closest to our system, so we could phase that pipeline over a period of time as additional supplies are needed. We also have a northern route. We could move water from the northern part of the system into Copper Mountain Ranch. That one's going to be a little bit longer to construct lengthwise. And then we have, you know, possibly a pipeline between the north and south of Anderson-Mohawk, which is the western connection. And then we have some pipelines we plan to construct, which is right around the eastern connector, which moves water from the main part of our system, which is Burgess Peak, to Scott Drive. So that's kind of our thought of how we'd move water from Anderson-Mohawk into our system and up to Copper Mountain Ranch. So with that, I'll turn it over to Larry to talk about the schedule and some of the next steps, and then answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Fred. And Teri Sue, thank you as well.
And so I guess before I get into the schedule, it's probably abundantly clear to the council at this point that there's a number of elements that really are, still need to be worked out on this particular concept. I'll refer to it as a concept. We've spent a lot of resources and time bringing it to a point that we could present to the Marin Council this evening. But there are a number of, there are a number of steps that are still actually necessary. And so ultimately, what you'll see is that we're, again, we'll start with the June 21st date that we're asking the Marin Council this evening to consider the memorandum of cooperation. And I talked a little bit about that in the request for council action that the Marin Council will be considering later on this evening. Again, I think that the Marin Council would agree that you'll see that it's really written as a framework document. It really is just a, an understanding that Arizona Water Company and the city of Casa Grande are going to work hand in hand to ultimately come up with alternatives, knowing that we've got a development community that are going to have to actively engage as well. But I also believe that the show of force with our two entities working hand in hand just gives the development community a little clearer confidence and vision that they, that we're ultimately on the same page with moving forward to resolve the issues that may be presented to them today. Sorry about that. So ultimately, if, once the memorandum of cooperation is considered and if approved, then we would be moving forward with a water supply agreement. And I know that Teri Sue talked just very briefly about that. We have not shared that with the Marin Council. We're still working on it from a draft perspective. But I think the message that I want to share this evening is that the Marin Council can essentially anticipate that there'll be several agreements as we begin to navigate this course. There'll be several different agreements that ultimately will shore up the partnership and really what I consider to be, provide the pathway as we work hand in hand in solving this and opening this up for development. If those things are finalized, we begin to do, begin some planning and perhaps even plating as early as January of 2022. We think time is somewhat of the essence at this point in time. And so ultimately, we would hope that we could meet those thresholds. Prior to that, we would envision that the mayor and council would be considering an operation and maintenance agreement. I know that in the presentation, both Terry Sue and Mr. Schneider actually talked about us utilizing some of their system to potentially be, to wheel the water up into the Copper Mountain Ranch. We've even broadened that up a little bit broader to, in fact, talk about the potential of them essentially becoming our water department of some sort, where there's a maintenance agreement and where they're handling the maintenance and the operations of the system. And so, again, just another agreement that we would be bringing before council to consider. If things go well, then we anticipate that maybe as early as May of 2022, that development could potentially begin in that area of the eastern area of the development. And ultimately, as these things are transpiring, we would envision a plan that would allow us to begin to start to have discussions about broadening the additional infrastructure that's been discussed tonight, the additional wells and the like, as well as perhaps finding the solutions to expand, to perhaps have ADWR consider the expansion of our designation and/or to find other alternatives that would potentially open up the development south or in that pink box area, I guess is how I'd refer to it in the map that I'd shown before. And I guess, mayor and members of the council, I would just close by indicating that there's, as I said just a minute ago, there's a lot of work that's been done, but there's certainly a lot more that needs to be done. I personally believe that working together with Arizona Water in this case shows the collective efforts to the development community, and I believe that that will perhaps stimulate their interest in getting on this wagon to ultimately for resolve in this particular area of our community. The, as I said, the memorandum is somewhat specific from a policy perspective to the mayor and council to essentially agree that this is something that this council would want to prioritize and for staff to allocate their resources on. And so with that, if you've got any questions of me and/or if you've got any questions of the folks from Arizona Water on the technical side, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah. I wish I would have paid better attention to science, Larry, but groundwater versus the Colorado River. I understand Colorado River is drought because of lack of rain and snow. Where does groundwater generate from? And is it going down at the same levels?
So the groundwater generally is, was formed many, many centuries ago when there was a time when there was, the ice age came down and they developed these supply sources underground. They are naturally replenished by runoff that we have through rain and coming down the mountains and that kind of thing. But groundwater is not, it's not a renewable water supply like, say, the Colorado River is, where it's collecting runoff from an entire watershed and it's concentrated into the river and comes down. So groundwater, when we prove up groundwater as a water supply, what we have to do is we have to find a volume that's large enough to serve 100 years because it's, the replenishment is very slow and it's not as significant. So when the city got its designation of assured water supply, it sought, when we say it's 4,000 acre feet a year, it's actually 4 million acre feet of water that's stored there. So that's how we make groundwater a reliable supply. And Fred and I were actually talking on the phone about the difference between a sustainable supply and a reliable water supply. And a sustainable water supply is considered usually to be a renewable water supply like the Colorado River. But the Colorado River has a somewhat unreliable, at least we're finding it to be at this time to be less reliable than what we've expected in the past. Whereas groundwater tends to be very reliable because we're pumping it from the ground, it's not affected by the hydrology in the area. What you really want to do is create a balance between those two things. And so that's what we're proposing with Copper Mountain Ranch.
So I think I heard you just say that the groundwater supply for Copper Mountain is good for 100 years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have, I might understand that people in Copper Mountain are going to get billed by the city for the water, and the rest of the city's going to be billed by Arizona Water Company. We're going to have a dual system, is that correct?
No.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Lavender, I, tonight, I cannot specifically answer exactly where their bill is going to be coming from. I know that we've had dialogue with Arizona Water about the potential of billing along the way. They are obviously governed through the Corporation Commission and are going to have certain requirements that they have to meet. But ultimately, I think the important message that I want to send is that this is the city's designation that we're ultimately going to be using in this, and there is a probability that they would be getting billed from the city of Casa Grande as well. Is that fair?
But we won't see something like Johnson Ranch or the utilities have been a real concern out there with runaway costs. They'll be balanced through citizens on both sides, correct?
The short answer is yes. And obviously, the, any type of a billing question or a rate question that would transpire, at least in this particular area, if the city, the city would be establishing the rate, that would be something that, there is a formal process that is outlined by state statute that requires citizen involvement in establishing those rates. The mayor and council would ultimately have the final say in those, but we would be following the statutes as we work through the various costs and analyses to determine what that rate might be.
Thank you. Do you want to come teach science for some of our kids? You explain it so well. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Curious on the viability of Anderson Mohawk. Does the Sakitown shelf come under them where they are? Are they limited in hydrology or are they okay?
So we've done a number of hydrologic studies on Anderson Mohawk, and the CFD, I guess, or the city at the time, or in cooperation, y'all did a lot of hydrologic studies at that time. The Anderson Mohawk is a considerable distance from the Sakitown Mountains, and so the aquifer or the bedrock is pretty shallow by the Sakitown Mountains, as I know that you would appreciate that. But it slopes down pretty quickly and gets to where there's some pretty decent alluvial, an alluvial area where the pumping is pretty, pretty good actually. And we've done some recent look, looking at the Anderson Mohawk area, and we feel that that area is really good from a transmissivity perspective, meaning that we can draw the water out pretty easily and the volume of water is there. Another benefit of the Anderson Mohawk area is that it's also, a lot of that area is within the Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation District, which is a groundwater savings facility. And so we can deliver water to the groundwater savings facility and recover it within Anderson Mohawk. So that's an added benefit in addition to the groundwater supply that's available. But yes, we believe that the groundwater supply is sufficient based on what we see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry Sue. Matt?
We had a few things, and this is probably, I think, one of the things that'd be farther down the road, but the infrastructure in Copper Mountain Ranch would be done by the CFD, correct? Is the plan right now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, it's, I would envision that it would be done through a combination of development, development infrastructure, as well as through the CFD.
Okay. And again, that, what we're doing is a structure tonight, so we'll hammer out all those details as we get closer. And I think the important thing here, or a neat thing here, is that Copper Mountain Ranch is going to be the new gateway, and that's one of our goals, is to make nice gateways into town. And this is a good place for it, right when you get off the freeway. And a couple other things I heard that I liked was, you know, Mr. Schneider said, "I like it when we work together," and so do we, because it's been a long time before you got here, but it's been very good lately, so we appreciate that. And I like how Larry threw in at the end that, you know, "It'd be great if you served and maintained our infrastructure at our water company." So just remember that. That was a good one, Larry. I like how you snuck it in, but, you know, and starting in a development like this with the aspirational-type housing, you know, because we're doing a lot of workforce stuff now, but this would be more of an aspirational-type development for people to move up to or to attract those higher-end buyers that we're losing to the valley now, especially, you know, the executives in these companies. So this is a great way to do it. And with the demand management program front-loaded on this, it meets all of our goals, and it'll be the rule rather than the exception in this development. So I just like how everything's kind of working together with the developers, Arizona Water and us, and making, you know, a great entryway and a great premier development in Casa Grande, so I hope it works out very well.
Lisa?
I agree. But I know, you know, when we look at what we're actually going to be voting on, the memorandum of cooperation, and of course, this is something that, I mean, it's so exciting to see us moving forward, and the timing is, you know, is perfect here. But it looks, I mean, we do have a long road ahead, it looks like, Larry. And when you look, when you look at the memorandum, you know, it talks about, you know, the need to prepare and formally consider various long-term, you know, maintenance infrastructure supply agreements. So it looks like this is just kind of the starting point to say, hey, we're going to cooperate, work together, and then kind of work through different things that are coming our way to make sure that we can move forward together on this. So, but no, I'm excited. Mayor, I know you've been working on this a lot with Larry, but no, I think it's a great project and something that I know the community's going to be really excited. I know they're going to be ready for it tomorrow. You know, they're going to think they can buy a house tomorrow, but we have to be patient. But I think that's, it's a pretty aggressive timeline, but, you know, hopefully we can meet that timeline. But it would be great if by next year, you know, we can, we can move forward a little bit.
But it did start 20 years ago, too, so.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. But I think it's going to be important to, to make sure people understand, you know, the timing on it.
Ask Larry, yeah, does this affect, how does this affect your developable land? Is it in concert with it or is there an issue?
All the details got to get worked out. This is the spot to focus on. I think the council's done a very good job of paying attention to this. There's enough developers out there that can help figure it out, but we need the support of the Arizona Water Company, Global Water. All of the above, we work together. It's an opportunity, I'm honored to really do something special.
Very good. Were you done, Lisa? I'm sorry. I was going to cut you off, sorry. Bob?
Yes, for Larry, I think I just need clarification on a couple of things. When we talk about assured water supply, is that certificates that are assigned to Copper Mountain Ranch?
It's different.
It's a good question, and in fact, it's something that we should have probably outlined to the mayor and council early on. The designation program, and again, I'm going to look to my technical colleagues here, the designation program is a bit different than the certificate program, right? And so this entire area here that we've talked about tonight will essentially be managed by the city of Casa Grande. We will be the designated provider, and we will, as the council approves Platts, will be responsible for allocating the designation for the development to take place. Unlike what transpires today with the certificate, where if there's a subdivision that takes place, there's another state entity that actually issues those certificates.
Okay. And is that measurable? When we look at the area of Copper Mountain Ranch, is there X number that equates to that?
The, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, the, my response would be that the acre feet that have been allocated or, and approved in the designation will not provide sufficient supply for the entire area of Copper Mountain Ranch. There is additional work that's going to need to be done to, in fact, either expand the designation and we then have control of it, and/or additional work that would have to be done for it to actually position itself to be in line to receive a certificate as well. But there is additional work, but I think it's important to note that this, the designation that the city has today would not provide water for the entire development.
Okay. And that's kind of where I'm going. I'm trying to visualize how deep we're digging into our bank of assured water supply. And tied to that is an observation, and of course, I have to tell a story. Back in the early 90s, I was a young lieutenant and I was handed a folder labeled Copper Mountain Ranch and tasked with coming up with a staffing study on what this area at buildout would require. And I thought we were looking at much more than 10,000 to 11,000 homes and a population pushing 80,000, I thought. Maybe my memory's a little cloudy, but with those kind of numbers in mind and the amount of assured water that we, that we have available, that's what I'm trying to reconcile in my mind of how deep is, is that need?
Right. And so I'm going to ask Fred or Terry Sue to assist me, Councilmember Huddleston, but I will start by saying that your memory is very accurate. We still have that analysis. I've got it sitting on my desk. And certainly at the time that that development transpired, the, what I would consider to be the parameters within our PNALE AMA with ADWR and just water in general was much different. The rules that were, that were on the books at that point in time are much different than they are today, obviously. And so the city did, in fact, go through an analysis for a staffing needs analysis and ultimately a level of service analysis to provide services based on that initial master plan. But ultimately, what we're talking about here tonight is a scenario where we begin to work very cooperatively with the development community, as Mr. Yount said, perhaps bringing more people into the discussion to look for additional solutions, additional dialogue with Arizona Department of Water Resources. But ultimately, what we know that we have the pathway for is roughly, is it, is it safe to say somewhere in the 10,000 to 11,000 home range? That's what we're anticipating with our existing designation today.
Okay, okay. That helps. Thank you.
And something that I will add is the fourth element that we talked about in the general land use plan, and part of the, our guiding principle is that we're going to acquire additional water supplies. So you might look at the groundwater as a feeder supply, that would be the supply that would be used initially, but we would be assessing water resource fees as all the development was occurring from the beginning, and that, those fees would then be used to go out and acquire additional renewable supplies so that we can keep things moving forward.
Well, and if I can as well, Terry Sue, is add the fact that I'm anticipating that effluent will become a very popular topic as we begin to go down this path, just like we're going to hear with additional development. And as I had mentioned to the mayor and council, we do envision bringing back to the mayor and council here in very short order, a bit of an overview on the effluent analysis that we've been doing as part of, as part of our water resources plan. And we anticipate that there will be likely a policy of allocation because effluent will become a very important component of future development in Casa Grande in the future as well.
Okay. So it's safe to say what we're looking at tonight and what the agreement will likely spell out addresses like a first slice of Copper Mountain Ranch?
Just that one.
Because I know that, that area is huge. It's kind of deceiving when you look on a map and then you go out there and step it off. It's huge.
Yeah, it's big.
But phase one is big by itself.
But I appreciate that. I mean, I, I understand. I thought, I thought we were speculating that we had enough assured water for the whole thing, and that just seemed out of, out of range to me.
We believe that the pathway to the initial phases of the development, that we have potential solutions that will get us to that, to that point.
Okay.
But we ultimately understand that there's a number of other elements that would go into the broader picture for this entire development, that obviously the mayor and council will be taking action on those. You'll be hearing about those potential options in the future as we develop those and the like. But it's something that we see that will likely incrementally start, and then perhaps with a more grander vision as the paths become clearer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I just want to make a comment and say thank you to Arizona Water and thank you all for all the hard work you both have done and your company has done on this. It is appreciated, and I think we have a good path forward. I think we have a good plan. I will say it's been, been in the works for a while, so hopefully now we can kind of get some direction from ADWR in terms of what they will allow and won't allow us to do. That'll be the next step, I believe. And then, you know, get the developers back at the table so we can have conversations with them. I didn't see that on our map, but maybe that might be something we might want to add in terms of a potential step included in there. So that being said, thank you, everybody. We've got about 20 minutes before the city council starts, so if there are no more questions... We've got about 20 minutes before the city council starts, so if there are no more questions, study session is adjourned.